Welcome to the November 2nd, 2021 Board of Education. Please join me for the closing of the class.
My pledge of allegiance. United States of America, the republic of which stands on a nation under God, individual and individual justice.
Okay. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. First at the back of the second, Mr. Gobardo, all in favor? Five votes. So, uh, privilege of the, or the, um, we have no privilege on the floor. Students here tonight, well, we have the next item on our agenda is called consent agenda. And that is where we deal with a bunch of business items all in one easy vote rather than going through each item on this list. What we do is just a single vote, so it makes our time a little easier. And for the students that are here today is your, your lucky day because it's gonna be a pretty short meeting based on what's on our, our agenda here. So I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Gobardo, second, stone, all in favor? Five votes. Moving right along to Board of Education reports. I, besides having attended a bunch of sporting events and being very proud of, of, of the Rangers and what they're doing, and spending a lot of time handing out Ranger burgers and various concessions, I, I can't see how proud I am of, of our teams and that's really all I have. Mr. Brackton?
Um, last, two weeks ago, uh, was at the MCSBA Labor Relations. Jamie, Rick, we all did a great job presenting and making it understandable about what the money's about. And we do have a better plan than some other school districts, I'm just saying. Anyway, um, great job though, guys. And a shout out and congratulations to the robotics team for winning the Rochester Ruckus uh, this past weekend and stuff, so they're back in, into competition mode. So that's good, good to see that that's happening. Tomorrow's ledger affairs. Okay, we had ledger affairs and then we've got board leadership tomorrow night. So, awesome.
Okay, last week I had a chance to meet with Darren. It was a great meeting. We toured the Canal View School. And we talked about some wish list items for that school. We also talked about playgrounds overall in the district and how that should be part of the capital project moving forward. Several of our playgrounds could really use some enhancements, if you will. There is at least one issue at Canal View that I would consider to be imperative that we fix sooner rather than later. Uh, and that is there's some significant flooding that takes place behind the school even with a modest rainfall. The students have come to call this puddle Lake Canal View. And, um, it probably would be easier for the teachers and staff if Lake Canal View could go away. So we'll need to have that as a priority for that school to get that fixed as soon as we're able to. But from that, I've just been doing a lot of volunteering for our high school drama club, which is going to be putting on Beauty and the Beast. Show dates are November 18th, 19th, and 20th.
Thank you. So I, I've swam through that lake. Walk with our, our little dachshund, which he's underwater, that tiny little dog. So yeah, I agree that that is the back of the building there from that ratio.
Is there a hill on the back of the property a little bit?
Yeah.
I also was at a lot of square events. But we had the equity committee meeting locally, where we were taking a look at some of our suspension sports code of conduct and comparing it to increases and seeing what changes we need to make there. We also went to Mon's Truck or Treats event, which was incredibly fun to have all the kids out. Parents Association put it on and I was able to volunteer and the kids were excited and energetic and there was lots of families out. It was wonderful to see. This past Friday, I was at the Homesteads for Hope Truck or Treat event as well. It was incredibly rainy and wet. There was tons of kids, though you would think that that would have kept people home, but it didn't. Lots of Spencer Court, uh, school district families were in attendance. And we stayed right until the end. It was for about seven o'clock under umbrellas, but we had a really nice time. And a shout out to Greg Kincaid tonight, whose team is playing in the finals of Mercy soccer.
So just real quick, I also turned the equity committee with, led by Mrs. Zinkovich, I was with them, it's, um, Leah, yeah, I'm sorry. And I also do volunteer session stands. It was fun. I gotta be honest, it's fun. Never seen more $20 bills in my life. Like nothing, $20 bills. And Monday is my tour of the high school with Derek.
Thank you. And with that, we turn it over to Ms. Swan.
Thank you. Some bright spots for myself before we jump into our presentations. I too had a chance to be at some of the athletic events. And on Saturday, I had a chance to see the girls soccer team and was just amazed at the athleticism. But to be honest, what even impressed me more was the level of sportsmanship and the grace in which that team carries themselves. And it's so satisfying and enjoyable to, to watch that team. I've also had a chance to get into some of the classrooms. And I've really been thinking about a particular classroom that I was in, a first grade classroom. And the students were engaging in some centers. And I was talking to one little girl who was doing some vocabulary work. And I asked her, you know, what will you do if you don't know a particular word? What are some of your strategies? And I thought she was gonna tell me about her strategies of learning, which would be great. And she said, oh, Mrs. Swan, she said, if you look right over there, that's what we, if we get stuck, that's how we know how to proceed or how to, what to do. And she shared with me like a list of strategies for independence. And I was thinking, as I continued to watch the classroom, um, some of our youngest students who, if you remember, as preschool students would have been in the middle of COVID and uninterrupted kindergarten year and just the level of independence as first graders and knowing their routines and being proud of their learning. And it just really represents much of what I'm seeing. Really solid classroom routines and procedures and safe environments. And even our smallest and youngest of students being able to follow those procedures and go along with their day just with such wonderful independence. So kudos to the teachers who really worked hard past few weeks setting those, that foundation up. So it's been wonderful. On, in regards to learning, have been working a lot. We had presented this to the board last, in our last meeting on our ESSA accountability data. And just took a step back and re-grounded ourselves and what some of that data means and some of the designations of improvement plans. And tonight, I'd like to invite our middle school colleagues up who are going to be presenting specifically on the middle school instructional work that is occurring this year and how that ties into their building planning team. So I'd like to invite Jim and Dave Russell up and Pam. If, I don't know if you're coming up as well, but Pam has also been such a great part of this growth.
Thank you, Ms. Swan and Board of Education. Thank you for the afternoon to be here tonight. Dave Russell, our assistant principal, and Pam Robinson, our teacher on special assignments, coming in for Tracy Galando. While she's out on her. So it is, is Mr. Zinkovich presented at the last board meeting two weeks ago the history of No Child Left Behind transitioning to ESSA. And he shared that, you know, we are Cosgrove has been identified as a TSI school based on the ESSA guidelines. And so we are here tonight to present how Cosgrove, how we are addressing that designation and share a little bit more about that. And so, you know, the district has set and shared some district-wide big rocks. And so from there, we took that and applied that to Cosgrove. And so many of those same big rocks that the district is focusing on, we are of course too, in terms of school re- reopening and culture response of education, learning, wellness and safety. And we also, you know, we spent a lot of time as a building talking about the notion of returning back to basics with last year, really the last 18, 20 months being so interrupted, getting back to basics in the classroom, back to basics in the hallway. Student expectations, student behavior, getting back to basics. So is, Mr. Zinkovich shared last time, with our designation, we are required to create a school comprehensive education plan under ESSA and ESSA, of course, is a federal educational law. And so New York State then takes that federal law and applies it to, applies it to schools that fall into this category. And so this summer, we worked very closely with our building planning team, work with district office to create our school comprehensive education plan. There are two overarching areas of focus in this plan, that being instruction and social emotional learning. We have talked a lot about social emotional learning, introduction to circles. It's really been great to see our kids, our students re-engage with each other through these community circles. The next presentation really though is on instruction and all of the steps that we are taking to ensure that we are providing our students the very best quality education that we can to ensure equal opportunity and access for all of our students every single day. Now, we also find ourselves in a bit of an interesting dichotomy in that in 2016, we were designated as a school to watch. We were re-designated in February of 2020 is a nationally recognized school to watch. And so the Schools to Watch program has four different areas of the rubric that is used to make that determination. One of them is academic excellence and I won't read all these to you, but all of these different bullets must be met in order to receive initial or re-designation as a school to watch. And so I think sometimes it's easy to sit back. I know I took a few minutes to sit back and say, so we have been recognized as a school to watch and at the same time identified as a school that needs to improve under ESSA. The essential, essential element Schools to Watch program is a national program. And New York State takes elements of that program and applies it to schools in New York State. So we went through a rigorous process to be re-designated. The interesting piece with the Schools to Watch program is that opt-out data, opt-out percentage does, is, does not factor into whether or not a school is designated as a school to watch or not. Which then leads me to the next slide, specifically talking about our participation rate improvement plan. So along with that school comprehensive education plan that we created this summer, we also created back in May of 2020, a participation rate improvement plan to directly address our participation, our students' participation on six through eight state assessments. Elements of this plan, and I'll talk a little bit more about some of these here in just a few minutes. The need assessment, communication with not only stakeholders within the building, but also the community, education, research, and then classroom preparation. To give you a little bit of background or a little bit of idea in terms of where we currently are with our percentage of students who do not participate, who opt out of the state assessment. 2018, 2019, you can see the 47 and 54%. 2020, of course, state assessments were canceled. And then last year, candidly, I think we all were expecting that state assessments were going to be canceled by the state. In fact, the state of New York petitioned the Department of Education to waive those exams. They were not waived. And so the state made the decision that instead of two days of ELA testing, two days of math testing, we only offered one day of each. I think with all of that confusion, so to speak, I think that helps explain why we saw that jump from last year, from 2019 to last year. So as we look back at our participation rate improvement plan, some highlights of our plan to address these opt-out numbers. The needs assessment, we'll be revisiting with our building planning team, actually this coming Monday, November 8th. The parent survey that we can talk about creating, that we will be creating to survey parents to get some feedback as to why they are opting for children out of state assessment. Education, me communicating regularly with our faculty and with our families in terms of the importance of and the impact for districts that do not meet the participation rate, which per New York State, 95% of our students don't hate the assessment. Research, we've begun the process of looking into and investigating other middle schools in New York State who do meet this 95% benchmark to see what they are doing different than we are. And then in the classroom, creating and increasing small low stakes opportunities for our students to experience online assessments, knowing that we offer computer-based tests in the spring, ensure that our students are ready for those exams. We have spent a lot of time talking that spring and the summer identifying and addressing learning loss. And how do we do that and how do we identify that for all of our students? For the past number of years, we've administered the NWBA math assessment. We did so this fall. And just a few minutes, Dr. Russell will share a little bit of our data from those assessments. With our change to our building schedule this year, we have common time built in during advisement for each of our core departments to meet weekly to take a look at not only this data, but also as a grade level, what we're, as a grade level, it is a six through eight department. Core for teaching, how we are teaching it to make sure that we are aligned. And again, providing that opportunity and access for all of our students. We are working with our content focused coaches. We have five of them at Cosgrove. Whose names are on the board and they are doing an outstanding job. And I know that later on this year, we will present more on this content focused coaches, on their role and all that they are doing in our building. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Russell, who will share a little bit of info on our NWBA math and ELA results for not only this fall, but also some comparison data for the past few years.
Thank you, Jim. So I'm gonna take a moment to kind of explain what's on this chart and how to break this down. Number of different ways we can look at this data. So as you can see from the title, these are our math results. So we give the NWBA assessment in ELA and in math, building wide twice a year. Once in the fall, which generally takes place in late September or early October. And once in the spring, which generally takes place after New York State three, eight classes. So figure of middle to end of May. So on this chart, what you'll see, the blue columns for sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade are from our fall 2019 performances of our students. So essentially just before the COVID shutdown. So September, October, 2019. Then we have the orange columns, which are from the fall of 2020, which was last year when we were in the hybrid slash remote learning model. And then we have the gray columns, which are from this fall, which we just took now. Okay, a quick point of note on each of these. It's interesting that all three were actually done and administered differently. So in the fall of 2019, we used the traditional model where students actually took the assessments in their ELA and math classes, depending on what test it was. In the fall of 2020, because of the model we were in, we actually had students take this test completely remote. So on Wednesdays, when students would be remote learning, they were actually taking this from home in the fall and in the spring. This year for the fall, we actually tried a new model where we shifted to a testing schedule for the day that we use when we administer state assessment. So as Jim mentioned on one of his previous slides about preparing students for taking online high-stakes assessments, this was actually an entry in the foray of the students having to experience what it means to come in and have a testing schedule for the day and take a test in the morning. So one of the things you also see on here are these gold numbers. The gold numbers are the average, essentially normative mean for that grade level in that year. So essentially what you have is in the fall 2019, Cosgrove's average RIF score, which essentially is the average of all of our students, how they perform. The sixth graders performed at 219.4, that national average is 214.1 for sixth graders that year. So knowing that we have the fall 2019, fall 2020, and fall 2021 data up here, let's take a look at a couple things. So first and foremost, students that would be in sixth grade here in blue are in orange here and in gray here. So one of the things that you'll notice is that we did have a general increase in that performance from students as they progressed through Cosgrove. And we could see something similar where seventh graders here are now in the gray, eighth graders here. We still have that gradual increase. The other piece that I would like to highlight is the possibility for testing error, if you will. Remember, the fall 2020, we essentially had this taking place remotely. So the participation rate amongst all three of these years, the orange had the lowest participation rate. However, one thing I would highlight is for the fall 2019 and the fall 2020, our percentage participation rate was 90% and above for each grade level. So one of the things we're gonna talk about is, we use this data because it really does help give us a great snapshot of how our students are performing because there's so much participation in it. You know, one of the things Jim mentioned on the previous slide was the number of students that opted out of state testing. So we only have a certain snapshot that that data can show us when the state results get released. So one of the advantages that the NWBA shows us, especially in the blue and the gray columns, is really how our students are performing on this assessment. And the fact that it's so many of our students, again, 90% and above each of those years, really helps give us an accurate prediction. And with that said, I'm gonna jump to the ELA slide for a moment. Again, the same concept, blue column being fall of 2019, orange column being fall of 2020, gray columns being fall of 2021. And again, one of those things you'll naturally see is that progression year to year, each of the grade levels showing some sort of development as, as the students progress through. All right, yeah.
And what we use this data for is to inform our decisions for our response intervention, our RTI. If you've seen this pyramid before, RTI really is broken down into three different tiers. Tier one being all students receiving tier one. It's good quality classroom instruction, modifications that are made as needed for our students. Tier two is more strategic intervention. And tier three is more of that intensive intervention for students who need more support. You likely have heard of the transition that our elementary schools, I know you've heard of the transition our elementary schools have made from RTI to MTSS. And we are in that process as well.
And if I could add one thing real quick, Jim, this process is meant to be fluid. You know, one of the beauties about using this is that we're not locked in. And we actually transition students depending on need from tier one to tier two, potentially tier two to tier three, and then out of tier three and out of tier two. We actually have, as the quarter change comes up, in, is this next week or so, I've already been getting recommendations from teachers about students that are gonna be moving out of three into two, out of two into one, moving around. So it does give us flexibility to address student needs.
And as we transition to an MTSS approach, you will see that that academic support, of course, is still there, but it is that, it's that whole school approach, that wraparound approach that includes PBIS, school community collaboration, and professional learning. If we take a look at these five different instructional focuses, I really wanna spend a few minutes on the first three bullets. Integrated co-teaching, personalized learning, and inquiry-based approach. Just to give you a brief snapshot of some of those instructional approaches we are taking as a building to identify learning loss, to identify our designation and to ensure that we are providing opportunity and access for all of our students. Integrated co-teaching began a couple of years ago, last year actually, as we began to phase out our 1511 program at Cosgrove. So 1511 was for students who received that special education service and was a self-contained setting. As we have transitioned to integrated co-teaching, students who were traditionally in that 1511 classroom are now in classrooms with more students, general education students, as well as our ICT students that is now transitioned to sixth and seventh grade with the, our intended next year, that'll transition to eighth grade. So the entire building, our 1511 students are now in our ICT classes. Special education teacher, general education teacher, co-plan, co-teach each lesson with state standards, as they meet state standards, they address state standards to ensure again, that opportunity and access for all of our students. Special education teacher is in each class for the full period. And so with sixth and seventh grade, our core classes be four days a week, that special ed teacher is in there four out of four days. It allows us to provide specialized instruction aligned with and created to meet each state standard. But I'd like to show you now the brief video, a minute or so, of one of our integrated co-teaching classes, Mrs. Corelli and Mrs. Alaco.
So you are offering that base from the first line. If the number is multiplied and the x is the number of times. The question, oh, but I was really in the next one with the word base and not four. And we're gonna walk through the back and then it's clear. Okay, so when you look at the two, which is all the what? I forgot, two, eight, and then the little number is what? Which one is telling what number to do? Slide, and one of them is to put on a pin. Right now, find it. Find it, right now, find it. So you think about little X one and X in your ear and be like, okay, where do you come from? So when I read a little X one, it's a little guy telling you how many times you're multiplying that base. Because it's all about the base, right? All about the base, everything. So it's all, that's how you do it, that's how you work. And that's what you do. And how much you did that? Just send to the four powers. Fantastic, four powers, one, two, three, four. And there's four of them, and that's for the number, you have one of them. And the bigger number on the base.
So as I watch that, what is just amazing to me, and so it's a sixth grade math classroom, is if you were a person who just stopped into that classroom, it would be impossible to tell who the special education teacher is versus who the general education teacher is. And that's the, to me, that is just what is so amazing to watch, the opportunity that we are providing for all of our students in that room. Again, Ken Rich dot, full disclosure, Rich Closey created that and did an amazing job. Ken Rich dot put up their names of teachers and their role. You wouldn't be able to tell that piece as opposed to the way it used to look in a 15 to one classroom where it was up to 15 students and a teacher and likely an aide in that classroom. Different experience, of course, for our students. Second instructional focus is personalized learning. And so we're using the result of our math assessment data to drive instruction. We have returned, frankly, this year of data days, where we'll be able to really dig into that data, focusing on engaging and connecting with students early and often where they are. Differentiating instruction to meet the needs of each of our individual students to help them succeed. And we have a new librarian, Jessica Weenhauf, who this year, who is just off to an amazing start. We've had a lot of conversations with her about a library audit to really look at what books are we offering in our library and do they meet the needs of every one of our students? The next slide is a brief video clip of Rob Allen's classroom. He is our teacher leader, content focused coach for English at Cosgrove. And I'll just let this play for a second and then we'll talk to him just a little bit. So we finished the test, we did some reading, we're doing quick write, and we're in high vote. So for our quick write, the fact that any novels, stories, TV shows, or movies that really stuck with you and left like an imprint on your brain. I couldn't, you could have powerful scenes, powerful sections, or the entire text itself might have just really resonated with you. So think about what made those stories, films, shows powerful? And why you think they still resonate with you today? Why you think they'll stick with you? If you have five minutes and you do a quick write on this, I'll do a quick write as well. And I love is, is we watch the rest of this just play. Every single student is engaged. Every single student is hard at work, completing the task that Mr. Allen assigned because of that personalized nature, the approach that he took, just outstanding to watch every single student in that classroom engaged on task because it's personal and personal to them. And the fact that Mr. Allen was also completing that with class, I love that as well. That brings us to the next slide. That brings us to the next slide, which will highlight our third instructional approach that I'd like to share with you that we're really keeping on this year. And that would be inquiry-based instruction.
Absolutely. So one of the things that we are transitioning to along with New York State is moving away from just the concrete men, road memorization of skills and facts, and shifting to more of an inquiry-based thought. So specifically in science classes, it helps flip the classroom to, instead of just following a set procedure, we actually give students the opportunity to explore and think more deep and essentially in larger context about what's going on. The inquiry-based model allows students to not just perform what is required of them, but give those opportunities for inquisitive thought. And as we can see, we actually have a video here of a science lesson where students are going around and essentially go through a number of different science stations, and let it play, and we'll talk about it. So one of the things you'll notice is, there's a number of stations around the classroom with different lab options for the students. And one of the things we continue to encourage for our teachers is to provide opportunities for students not just to perform what the activity or the task is, but to experiment with what's going on. Jeez, I wonder what might happen if I try this? It allows students to really take that next step to get to those higher level rooms, but also really kind of, on some level, take this where they want to, that personalized approach.
This is Mrs. Switzer Ringgill's classroom. She's our science teacher leader at Cosgrove, as well as our content focused coach. So just a snippet of some of the inquiry-based instruction as we continue to transition to our next gen standards, specifically for science. The last two, the last two approaches, the last, our last two focuses, blended learning, I'm going to move through this pretty quickly. We, we did a lot of work on this before the pandemic, and we are re-engaging with this this year in terms of emphasize, emphasis on blended learning group projects, giving students access to like a stationary patient model, working very closely with our content focused coaches and rebuilding as we continue to move forward. And then, of course, assessment, that focus on assessment and how do we measure what students know? So certainly our use of Atlas, using that standard department time, time with our RTI providers, and then analyzing replacements for our students to ensure proper tier support. In closing, as we think about our next steps, and where do we go from here? Continuing to analyze that math assessment data and student performance on our local assessments, as we will continue to transition to a MTSS approach, continue to build our content focused coach program and expand our work with departments. And then really that focus on our fifth to sixth grade transition to make sure that we are, to make sure that we are setting up our incoming sixth graders for success and working collaboratively with our four elementary schools to make sure that we are ready on day one for each and every one of our new sixth graders as they enter Cosgrove. So again, thank you so much for the time tonight. Are there any questions for myself, David, or Pam?
So Jim, I have a question, and I forget the acronym of this, but what, early on when we were talking about participation, where you had said, where we only had fifty percent participation, where it had dropped down from fifty, or fifty percent that did not participate.
Correct.
Do we have any feel what other districts, did other districts have that same kind of drop because of the code-related or?
Well, I don't know that can give you specific numbers. I know that in anecdotal conversations with area principals, we were all kind of feeling this last spring, because I think we were all awaiting official word that we're going to cancel this exam. New York State applied for the waiver. I think we all thought that it was, that was going to be granted, and then it wasn't. And so I think we were all very much in the same boat of parents had a lot of questions, a lot of concerns about, it used to be two days, now it's one day, I can't believe it's still on. I wasn't surprised to see that number that high, just given where we were last spring.
And then another broad question. You had mentioned that you were calling around to other middle schools who were meeting the ninety-five percent or not meeting. Do we have an understanding of across the state, how many other middle schools are, are in the same situation where we're not meeting the ninety-five?
No, I don't know that I can give you that percentage off the top of my head. In getting conversations with Monroe County principals, I, I think a lot of us right now are struggling, and again, I don't want to say from the district. I think we're, we're all struggling right now to meet this, and I don't know if it's coming off of the past two years. You know, I think that's the other piece with this asset designation, you know, it's, it's off of data from seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen school year, which makes it, which makes it challenging, especially given all of the golf.
But generally, do we know if there are a key proportion of middle schools that are hitting the, the less than ninety-five percent that are in that designation?
Regionally, I think it's pretty mixed right now. There are some school districts who are meeting it, but as Jen said, more schools than not, particularly last year, struggled to meet the participation window, particularly because the state really didn't want to give the assessments, the federal government didn't give them the waiver. And so then when it was rolled out at a local level, they changed the format. And I think both school districts and parents really questioned the, the benefit of utilizing those assessments. So that's why I appreciate some of the, the shift of focus. Certainly, we want our students to be participating, we want to get a good read, but that's where some of the local assessments, the math assessment that Dave talked about helps give us a sense of where our students are at. And again, I appreciate and just want to build upon what Jim said. This designation is from data where students are well into their secondary studies right now. So it's, we need to be careful in regards to what the designations are and what we're doing in the day-to-day and all of those sound instructional practices.
I just had a question about the math test. I think you mentioned that we have a ninety percent participation rate in that test. Why do we have such a higher, a much higher participation rate in math and a lower participation rate in the state?
So with the math test being something that we offer locally, to be very honest, we ask everyone to take this exam to really give us a, a gauge in terms of how students are doing. We really don't, because it is a pseudo-local assessment, we don't really offer that opportunity per se to opt out of this exam, where with the three through eight state assessments, parents have that ability to choose for their child that.
So the ten percent, are those just students who were not in attendance at school on that day, or how does that work out?
I, I would actually build off of that, if, if we were to look at this fall, knowing that we did it in the school day, we ran a modified schedule, we were up above ninety-five, ninety-six percent. Those students who, you know, we were at ninety-four, ninety-five after the day that we administered the test, then it was a matter of calling students down, maybe having them make it up when the, the next time that they were, that they were back in school.
And just kind of a point of observation as a parent over the years, I think it would be very helpful for the community to have a better understanding of exactly what this kind of data is and what it's being used for. I know for myself, every spring, I feel like I get the letter about New York State testing, and then right on the heels, I get the one about math testing. And all I see are days that my child is going to be missing out on classroom instruction. It gets frustrating for me and my students, and I have to imagine teachers as well, who are trying to finish up a curriculum for the year. And I just love wondering if we're creating a sense of frustration, and maybe that's why some parents are choosing to opt out of the state test, because they know that their child is also going to be taking the math test, and they might think the thing are similar. So I think a communication piece describing the two exams and what we're hoping to glean from them could be helpful.
I, I appreciate that feedback. I, I, yeah, I appreciate that feedback. I think it'll be, I think that parent survey that we'll be creating and sending, my goal is before holiday break in December. It'll be very interesting to see what that feedback shows us. And to your point, Lori, making sure that those growth reports, so the post, both growth reports in the fall and in the spring, in infinite campus, we attach it to the backpack, making sure that communication is, is clear and forthcoming as to what that, how we, how to read that and how that is beneficial for parents and students. Anything?
I do, there is no breakdown by subgroup in this NWA math result, so correct?
So we have that data for this presentation, the purposes of this, we shared kind of the general overview, but we have, NWA provides us with details by race and ethnicity, actually even beyond that, subgroups within these areas. So for example, in the ELA results, yes, this is the overall average RIT score, basically your average for the whole past, but within that, other subdomains of reading comprehension, of vocabulary. So there's actually a breakdown within skill sets within these, so we do get an abundance of data. For the purposes of this presentation, we wanted to kind of show what it looked like over the years, but we do have the breakdown of student performance by racial designation as well.
And I'm asking you right off the top of your head, so if you don't know, you don't know. Is it, when broken down into subcategories, are we looking at the same deficit they're picking up in the state testing?
So I think the, the difference between deficit, we're kind of talking about is participation rate. So like, i- if we're talking about performance, I would have to go back and look at NICE set of performance in terms of proficiency level one, level two, level three, level four. What Jim was kind of talking about with deficiency earlier is students actually participating. Yeah, and, and to, to answer that along with Lori's question, we had strong participation rates in 2019 and this fall, because students are actually taking it in our building with us. Last year, it was really mixed bagged, we're trying to connect with all these students as they're learning remotely. So I would say on a discharge, the blue and the gray columns have the strongest participation rate. You know, I was saying ninety percent would be kind of an overall, it's a good thing, but I would say in each grade level, there was less than five students each. They really didn't get to it whether they were out on a long-term absence or whatever they may be associated with while we were at the school.
Right, I was, I think I was thinking more about in terms of performance.
Yeah, so to address that question.
This isn't on that, I'm just.
No, sure. And to address that question on performance, we do, so, you know, is being identified as a TSI school, there was one subgroup that we underperformed in essentially. We see, we do see a, a bit of a dip in that data at our math assessment results, not quite to the extent that we saw in the state assessment.
Okay. So you're still seeing a slight dip, but with more participation, you're seeing it's, it's more, it's evening out, as you would think with averages.
And yeah, I just want to remind you from the presentation that Todd gave and the ESSA accountability data, the way the state measures growth and the markers that we have to make are, the formula is modified based on participation. So even if students show relative growth, if there aren't the population taking the assessment, that formula changes. So it's almost like you get double dinged right before that. Where this is sharing with us really at an individual student level, so an important instructional information.
I have two things. So you mentioned in one of your slides, your billing plan team was going to investigate schools who were getting ninety-five percent, what they're doing, right? How are you going to do that again? Email them, call them, be with them, go over there, all the above?
No, true. Yeah. So yes, well, all of the above. And so once we, once we are able to dig into that data and to really, so then it's going to be interesting as we look at that, will we use data from, these are all questions that we need to work through as a building planning team? Will it be data from spring of twenty twenty-one? I don't know. Will it be data from spring of two thousand nineteen, the last time it was administered in earnest? So those are all things that we'll need to work through, and then, yeah, it'll be a combination of reaching out, and maybe it is a, a site visitation to have that conversation.
You're looking at regional, local, then in theory, not like Long Island or out of state, I mean.
Well, you know, it'll be, David, I'll kind of go where the, where that data takes us. If we see that there are certain areas of the state, I, it certainly is worth reaching out to, to just hear what those school districts are doing, what those schools are doing differently.
Back across, you go back to the slide, the bar graphs for math ELA, but that, that's fine. So, so on the left there is sixth grade, right, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one. So two fourteen is the actual NWA cutoff or being on grade level for math?
This, that, the national average RIT score for sixth graders this fall.
Right, so, so your orange is the two fourteen, so in theory, you guys are right there then.
Yeah, ours was two fourteen, and this year, two thirteen.
Right, right, okay. Bugger.
Thank you.
She made them share.
Thank you, thank you. You did great.
Now to our enrollment report, and Rick is going to share some information regarding our enrollment.
Thank you, Miss Spahn. And before we get rolling, just something that, when I worked on about a year or so ago, she should talk a little bit about the importance of that, so Corey, if you can. So you can see the importance of student enrollment and what we report to SED. I'm just going to really hash what was in the memo, but it's just in a little bit different format, so visually. So this, historically, this is where we're at. You can see from two thousand twelve up to the current, two thousand twelve, we're at three thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven. We're now down to three thousand four hundred and ninety-one, that's an increase of four hundred and thirty-six students. Again, this is an effect of your, so as I've shared in the past, I do try to, to look at this method, as was mentioned in the cohort study, something that the district has done manually, way before I ever started here. We also are trying to use Forecast Five, so I sort of run dual models. So this is actually a report from that, it shows the same information, but just differently, and it shows as a percentage what the change is. I do want to highlight, again, one of the, the issues you may run across as I'm looking at pool data is that this number says three thousand five sixty-five, that includes our pre-K students from last year. All the other data that you're going to see excludes it. So again, one of the dangers of looking at two different, like, data points. So be with the pre-k, pre-win, though? Well, remember, this is, this was the prior year. But yes. You, I mean, for, depends on what you're talking about. Last year it was thirty students, this year it's seventy-two. This just is showing you what's projected. Again, this is using the model that we do, I am, and you can just see the changes year to year. This is using Forecast Five. This is using Forecast Five, so you can see the variance. It did, it did, what's reported here, three, four, seventy-one versus thirty-five away. Well, what's causing the variance? One is. I don't really put in the ungraded. Number here, whereas in this, I do. It's included in the prior data, so that's being rolled into this data, but it's not been done here. The other. Is that Forecast Five uses a lot of birth data. That we receive, and you know, that impacts future projections as well. And if we were to get into the Forecast Five data set, you could actually go in and change. That information to see what would happen moving forward. But I mean, they're relatively close. Once, if you were to start adding in the ungraded. They are close enough where, once I get a little bit more comfortable with Forecast Five, we'll probably make that switch. Again, this is by grade level, same information, but sharing it differently. So you can see. You know, the K five enrollment over time. Very similar, about fifteen hundred range, where you're seeing the major changes is in the high school. So again, in in twelve thirteen, it was this twelve eighty. You know, currently we're at eleven oh four. Big picture though, enrollment is looking to stay relatively flat, if not go down. The reason I say that is, as we continue to talk about capital projects, if you're looking to do major expansions. We're going to have to really have a conversation with the state about. You know, if you wanted to add square footage, they probably will not like that if our enrollment doesn't show that type of growth. Next three slides, really, I'd just like to say, okay, how useful is this? And although there's no rhyme or reason, as I was going through and looking at what the variances were, so. The blue is what we projected. So in two thousand nine, ten, these are the numbers we were projecting for these future years. The gold is what actually came in. And the overall takeaway was that similar to our main financial planning, farther out you go, the larger the variance you get. So I'm just showing each one again, some were much closer than others. Forecast Five data, Jim mentioned it, we share reports on the importance of our C R S E. This is showing the enrollment as a percentage over the district by race and ethnicity. This is the same report except shown by building. So this first slide here is all our elementary schools. So again, you go back to that little, what's called the doodly. This, this information does impact staffing. The different cultures in a building and how you address those, you know, I'm talking more from a financial standpoint, but. I'm sure between Kristen and Ty, they're looking at that as well, as well as Jamie for for hiring and taking certain decisions. And this is what it would be for the middle school and high school. Again, reference back to that little video. It impacts the importance of attendance impacts our E L L or L A P population. It impacts our free and reduced, what we modify for. It was mentioned earlier, our S of reporting, our title one grams are really based a lot. On. Well, we come. So this is really, this is important information, and obviously a lot of the different. Aid that we receive is proven awful in enrollment. So tried to keep it in five minutes. Try a lot of data, we could probably have another session on it, but any questions?
Rick, is it, is there any way that, like, building, we built and stuff in the, in our district, does that play into the data that, like? Everyone program uses. New residential.
Yes, yeah. So in Forecast Five, you can go in and there's cells where if you know a particular. Housing development is coming in. You can actually add and make those type of different scenarios to see what we intend to be. It also provides, although we don't go into here more during budget development, but the the teacher. Ratio to students, overall district staff ratio to students. Again, which is very helpful information, especially if you're getting into budget development.
Can you go back a few slides for a little breakdown by elementary school? So the jump in month for the Asian, was that when we. Hope students better now be. So two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, there was like a.
Yeah, so. That's when we made the transition from one from one dog to two.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
We're gonna transition into.
Thank you, Dan, for having me for a series. This time we're finishing up the five thousand series. I did try to add some effects because Kevin wanted some additional. So, but I did put them in just one at a time because especially these first couple ones that were in order. That we looked at them, there were a number of questions for some of these. For this one is specifically use of school district trademark. We do have some, a couple of business arrangements with organizations. Who use our trademark to market some of the stuff that is sold at Tops or other places. So the policy does come into effect, it's minimal revenue, but it does allow us to have some. You know, some bit of control over the use of, you know, the Ranger Bear, the different logos, the expensive four logos. So it does come into play on sporadic basis, I guess, if you will, like after that break. So I, that's one we probably want to keep.
Yeah, as long as we are utilizing it, I'm fine with with keeping it. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't just. There as a policy and then never being used.
Yeah, that, I think that's one that we would look to, if there's any, you know. Any issues with what we're doing, companies are doing with the with the trademarks. Next up, change orders for capital projects. So I did look at a couple of districts near us. I did not see the policy in two districts, but I did see Greece had a policy with respect to the the change, the. Amount of the change order, there was a set of ten thousand, and it was in one of their facility policies. I know that there was some discussion amongst the board members about. What the threshold should be, whether the policy should be kept. It is kind of up to you. This is not an eerie one. Dictated policy, it never was according to them. So it's something that Spencer Ford came up with a while ago. It does serve to put the board on notice of all the change or any change or under twenty, over twenty thousand dollars right now. So it does come into play.
Does it, does that play into our auditing as well in terms of the fact that there's that additional oversight piece?
Not really, although there was an audit back in the day by the state comptroller. Who looks specifically at the amount of change orders. So at the end of the day, I would also recommend keeping this. I just think it. Allows for that additional safeguard.
And there is, there is, I've added something to the one note, there's thirty-five thousand dollar limit where we have to go in the bidding. S E D does ask for the proof of going through the bidding process if the change order is over thirty-five thousand dollars. So. If you did have any interest in changing that threshold, I think the threshold of twenty thousand is still workable. But to your, if you're with your point, Lori, eventually as inflation goes in the projects, that's going to buy a, buy a last of the project price for that change. So it could always be in the future.
So if you weren't familiar with what it would, change order, that that's a construction contract term. When something has changed from the the base contract and it's either added to taken from. It could be dollar amount, it could be timing, it could be alternate materials. It's just a way to change the original contract. So I I think it's. Really strong in that we should keep that in our policy. And as I put a note there, I want to. Take a look at it and I'm going to look through my sources and see what other districts are and how it's actually operated. But for now, I think what our policy is is. Good solid.
Uh, next up was borrowing the funds. I did reach out to Gary one, both these, if there are questions about this one. That policy, they actually removed on the thought that the power of the board to borrow the fund was included in two of the one thousand series policies. When I looked at those, it's not spelled out, so it's not specific. It's a general policy about board powers, not necessarily laying out the. The more stipulations that this policy contains about borrowing of the funds. So. You go with the eerie one. But this policy can be removed. If you want to keep the more explicit stipulations, the policy can stack. But.
Is there some reason or is there something, did somebody add some specific?
I think this is what I just asked.
So. I've got your. Why is Bocie not proposing a policy? All the information supporting the policy, policy already is set for in statute or regulations, question mark. If so, would we need to, I'll see repeating it, or perhaps that's why Bocie no longer suggests it. So so the idea is they, all this is in statute regulations, do we really need to repeat that?
But it sounds like it's not in statute to the rule. That's true.
There would be provisions for us to borrow, but the board is going to have to act to take out a bond, whether it's a bond anticipation note, serial bond for construction. It's the board that's going to be acting, it's the board that has the power to do it. So you will be on notice of any of those borrowings that do take place. But it would be spelled out either. I don't know if it's in the regulation, she did not include that in email back to me today, but. The borrowing process will be included in in some, well, probably.
So just Jonathan, one step back there. Right now we have two policies, number fifty-three twenty-one.
Yes. Because of the numbering process that Erie One uses, their policy system did not have the change order policy. That's what we had in the whole system. So we'll have to incorporate that in somewhere when we renumber all of the policies at the end of the year. Okay. Purchasing, I brought, I included it simply because we had excluded it before. All of the information that was in the purchasing policy was removed by Erie One and put in their regulations a number of years ago. So a lot of the stipulations will be coming, or rather the parameters around purchasing will be coming in the regulations at a later date. I just don't have those regulations yet because we haven't engaged in that.
So I had a really broad question on that is. We had an issue a couple of years ago with a board member. Excusing themselves from a vote because of what they thought might be a conflict of interest or. It says, no board member or employee will have interest in any contract. Is that defined anywhere of what they mean by interest? It turns out that it was. A husband was employed and we decided that that's really not interest in the company being employed at.
It would be defined, I think, in sixty-one ten, the ethics policy that the board has. I think it's two thousand eighteen, we revised that. That does have provisions for conflict of interest, which we discussed on other occasions. And I think if this policy changed to the more limited newer version, it may take that out, so there wouldn't be a conflict between sixty-one ten and this one. But if it stays in, we can resolve that conflict just by adjusting the language. I think the conflict of interest provision fifty-one ten are probably. Okay, that that takes care of them.
Okay. Because there was no definition in this one. So if there is a definition in the, the other policy, then I find that.
Uh, I think the last one for this slide is Medicaid compliance program. I did include in the one note, the list of. The amount of revenue that we've received for the revenue code of Medicaid compliance program. Our highest was four eighty, four fifty, somewhere in there, I forgot it, or in Europe. But that was two thousand eight, prior to the financial crisis, when New York State made revisions to the, the, how the payment process worked. So our revenue from that code went really far, much further down into the one hundreds, even below hundreds for a couple of years. I'm inclined to keep the policy, just in case it does add that layer of of. Review towards the, towards the receipt of the federal fund. So I think it's a good thing, but also as, you know, things go up, if we could go back up to that level. May not be likely, but. The policy, but it's probably worthwhile to to keep that policy for now.
For those who didn't get a chance to read it, is there's a trigger at five hundred thousand dollars of Medicaid funding? And so the question was asked, how? Are we ever close? But I agree, you know, we're not close right now. They may change. Their calculations, and we may end up getting closer to it. So I I agree with keeping it.
Then not many questions about the remaining three of this slide, the insurance, the fixed asset inventories, I did include in one. Our accept value for our property that insurance uses. Hundred forty billion dollars for the replacement values of the building and the land, which probably covers some of the equipment as well, that they use at vehicles.
Thank you.
But it is, we do have a pretty broad state policy that's been every year, and they escalate the values, they've not property that. Let's see, next up, food safety and records management. We already took care of the records management policy earlier in the year. Food safety, there were questions about that, just one, I I propose maybe changing one word from special to student, so that it focuses on student related activities. As opposed to adult activities where they may bring food into the building. Whether you want to go down that road or not, I wasn't sure about taking it any further than that. I know there was a question about. Do we prohibit pop locks in general? Which would apply to everyone across the building, and I wasn't sure that that would. I won't, I will go.
So current policy does not prevent that.
It, current policy focus, it uses, uses the same language, special events, it's just never been enforced that way. Except for, you know, we do have issues with trucks and things like that, but that we have to deal with that separately. The disposal of consumer report information, a question about whether this policy is needed at all. I checked with human resources and they're not, they haven't done this before. This is really about pulling a consumer credit report for an individual, usually an applicant. Maybe in the private sector, it's done more often. I know I did it when I interned at the U S C F office, because they did a background check for reviewing finances for the federal government. I just don't think it's something that we do in the school district. Would come in the future, I don't know. This policy may not be necessary.
Or is it another one that we retain, just in case it's something that we eventually do?
So for our employees that are bonded, you don't do. A credit check? The bonding company do that?
Right now, they're under a, what would be called a general undertaking. They're under the general insurance policy. And it does lay out the positions and the amount that the coverage is, but it does, they're not getting a specific bond. Because the bond has to go through a sub company from who can use for our insurance. So it would be different rates and different coverage, but right now we're covered with the same amount, and that the board. Dictated into the reorganization in the July.
Okay, so so it it's not based on that, so. In 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 generally, a treasurer, accountant, or someone who has the ability. When they get, when they're bonded. when they get, when they're bonded, there will be a credit check. So that doesn't happen. Then their insurance is going to cover that regardless.
They're covered regardless right now based on the title, but the bonding, to my knowledge, hasn't been happening. So we changed it one after discussions with the insurance company. The insurance, insurance company indicated that they would be covered under our general insurance policy for the same amounts that you had dictated as that they weren't required to be bonded. So in prior to the July, we changed the resolutions that would say your general undertaking for the post to bond specifically.
What kind of employees will be bonded in the district?
Rick is the business official and assistant treasurer, our district treasurer. Purchasing agent, which is also Rick.
Inter, internal things auditor.
Uh, and then the last four on here, three of which we dealt with already two years ago when we revised the number of the technology policies and then the student grading systems. I received that back today from September forty. Then we're all the minimal changes, just a couple more to think. So otherwise, that really just dictates, brings us up to speed for what we're already doing with student, like kind of student grading system. So these three policies are essentially removed and folded into the next five fifty six eighty one school safety plans. That's the way that Erie one did it. So they were significantly updated in the way school districts now manage those crises and, and then plan for them through the emergency plan. Only one major question, which was on the fire and emergency drills. The buildings I spoke to or checked in with Sean at the high school and they do from time to time dictate that students have to take alternate exits. Like, let's say, we're gonna have a drill, but you can't use the main exit because maybe that's where the fire is, or something like that. So they do alternative exits, but they don't send them out the windows. I think that was a question, you know, as to using the alternate exits. I think they're there. Every classroom has the access to use the fire escape window if necessary, but they don't actually practice that. But we can reinforce with the principles that you should take the step of using the alternate exits, especially at the elementary level. If you're holding the drill at the same time every day, the student may be in the same room and going out the same exit. Better if you try different points in the day. So if the student is in the cafeteria or the gym, they try alternate exits. And then it's likely how they're meeting the requirement by using those different times of the day.
And then the other comment should be not brought up in an open discussion about the vision panels that, that respond to that.
Yeah, I think that that's something more relevant to the safety team and whether it should, should go in the district emergency plan.
Now, one, one of the things that that has come up as we're going through all these and I, I, some of Dave's comments, what we're we're, we're getting into some of the stuff, things that we may not have read in the past. So this is kind of a, a side topic for the fifty six eighty two. Do the, the sports teams, do they carry the footballers with them when they go to a different location? Do we know that?
Each, each school institution has one on site.
So the sponsoring school will have it on site. The other thing was, do we have one at the robotics warehouse?
I did not, you got a question. I do not know.
Bring it up here. It's one of the things that going to this, I, I started thinking about items like that. So our policy says wherever students are gonna be in a, a learning environment. So I think that's probably something that if we don't, we should be working with the other districts to share that to have.
Well, if they have the robotics at a school, then the school would be housing one, right?
Back and forth. I can look into it, find out if we got one.
But coming back to your point, I think is similar to my point, but not a policy issue necessarily, but more procedural in the sense of if we have the AED device in a school at a sporting event, but people can't get into the school to access it, that would be problematic. Or if you're on the, I'm gonna give an example, if you're on the, you know, our soccer field and there's an emergency, you have to have somebody run to the nearest school to get into a building that has to be unlocked. To get the AED device, then run it back out to the field. That might defeat the, it's not timely, it's my, it's procedural issue, not a policy issue. Like, I know we have to have it on site, but there's a difference between onsite and easily, easily acceptable.
No.
It's not, well, that's what I said.
Near the entrance of the building, because the requirement, I think you pointed out that the requirement have signed there isn't a new requirement. But I don't think we have, but we have the AEDs near the front where we would put aside.
They do, except that, you know, it's, you know, if you're on like, let's say, I'm gonna tell you where he's nice novice for sure. Is we had this incident where actually the tennis coach used to pretend to have a heart attack and would say, who's gonna go? And they have a kid run to see if they could get into the building to get the AED device. You know what I mean? And the AED device is, is in the entrance, but if you're coming from the back of the building and the doors aren't accessible, it's not necessarily easily, it's not a quick challenge is my point. So, but like you said, procedural, not. Take a look into it for safety.
I just think and just not to kick a dead horse, but our head proctor, Karen, I think, the new one, right? You think she might have, be at the point of contact during the sporting events, they have on her or having somewhere out in the, in the grass versus the building. I'm just thinking, we'll problem solve later, but why was the head proctor going in?
Yeah, I, I hear you. So and I like how you're framing it. It's not really a procedure and how do we make it accessible? But if we have a, a situation where we have to utilize it and utilize it quickly.
And then final slide is communicable diseases, ultra medical program and even immunodeficiency virus. So I did look into the communicable diseases policy. Erie one is not planning to revise that due to COVID. It is generic and in their opinion, they left it generic specifically for the fact that they expect the next pandemic to be different from this one. It could be lesser in severity, greater, you know, the parameters could be different. So they purposely left it a little generic. So they weren't gonna revise it. There are other policies with respect to pandemic related things, but there's more about district operations like remote learning and other things like that. That we could go down the road of if we wanted to put some of those in there, but this was not one that they were looking at providing.
Yeah, but this fifty six ninety one applies to all, and we're talking about everything from pink eye to strep throat to the policy that protects. This is pandemic specific.
And I did, I did check with our medical director and it's the county that dictates a list to her of what communicable disease and she has to report to the county. And it put it, you know, everything from measles to, I think I blew whatever's on that list, that they're the ones that dictate to us what we then have to report. And the last one is the bus. This again is a suspension port policy. There was a question about why do we even have this policy? And you know, from, from my knowledge, from going to school for this. Districts look at this almost from a cost saving pers- perspective, because as the buses age, they'll require larger and larger, more expensive repairs. So by phasing the buses out on a schedule, you, you maintain a greater amount of the trade in value and limit some of the maintenance costs that come later. ARS right now for the larger buses is eight to 10 years, usually about 10 years based on the way things have been going. And then the smaller buses are six to eight years. That's really, you know, after that, you get into repairs that we may not even be able to do in-house and they have to be sent out. So and then the salt corrosion and everything else that comes with living in Western New York. A lot of districts that I'm aware of go around eight to 10 year mark.
Jonathan, do we trade them in or do we sell them outright?
We, we trade them in to the company. There were some districts that were trying to go through the auction process and I don't know if they really got any better value for it.
So did something happen in the past where the district felt a, a policy was important to budgetary practice versus a policy?
It can be, I mean, some of these are much more, you know, or having control over certain things, you know, putting programs in place to make sure certain people are doing certain things. And whatever that may have been, I don't even know the original year that this policy went into play. So I can't go back and even Marcy Fordman will have all of the true things behind what led to these policies going into place. But they did make it through the nineteen ninety nine policy review process with Erie one. So they were prior to that, probably in the late eighties, early nineties at some point.
It was probably some, uh, someone was trying to not buy buses and the board says, we have to buy buses. We gotta keep them up and going and so I, I, I don't think there's a problem having it. I don't think it creates any undue restrictions. Why is it there? We're very kind of nodding back and forth.
Oh, all right. Kevin, I didn't, I, yeah, the things like how it was a problem. And we're just so used to that this is what we do, that just seems like normal practice, but.
Right, but it is good to have the board guidelines because that's something our head mechanic and our business official can rely on. Why are we trading the buses then after 10 years if we can get two more years? Yeah. Well, if the maintenance is gonna cost us more than it is to what we can get out of a brand new bus, then then.
Yeah.
Right, that was hit for the five thousand years.
A video and policy. Please don't. And so our last presentation tonight, I'm gonna ask Gary to join us as well, is on our food service operation update. If you remember, Gary, earlier in the summer had presented on food service operations. And at that point, we were thinking about how to improve participation in the food service program. And so we were gonna come back with that type of update and Gary was gonna talk to us about goals and how we were gonna improve participation. And that wasn't our reality this year. We've got plenty of participation. So Gary's gonna share a little bit about that, what food service operations are looking at right now and some of the focus areas are.
Yeah, so I'll start off, um, just a quick, you know, snapshot of where we're at. So fall of two thousand nineteen, summer of two thousand nineteen, we presented to the board. Our plan at that point was to look into marketing, um, different avenues that we could go down to help increase participation. At that point, in the fall of two thousand nineteen, we did do a survey. We had some pretty good participation. We had student survey and a parent survey, asked variety of questions. It would take an entire another presentation to go through. We had at least 20 questions on each survey. We had some fill in questions asking favorite foods, least favorite foods. What would you like to see? What fruits would you like to see? Why your kid doesn't buy lunch if you don't bring lunch? Or if you don't buy lunch, why don't you buy lunch? I included just one sample question about my child buying lunch at school and why? And, you know, of course I include this one to the, that my child likes school lunch is the, is the number one response. But it had a variety of, of data that I'm able to pull from it. And so what we did that year, even in anticipation of the survey, while we were on the survey, we did make some changes. Such as Gary had a serving line, number two, turned into just the daily chicken and pizza line. And that, and that directed a lot of the traffic toward that line where we had entrees on a separate line. And that increased the sales a little bit. We added some grab and go salads, some new menu items based on some of the ideas that we were having at the time, that what we were thinking, you know, let's try a couple of different things, see if these work. And if they don't work, we can pull them off. Tried some sampling of some new items at the elementary level, you know, just trying to prompt the kids to engage more with the lunches. Once we had the survey results, which we were actually preparing a presentation for you, which was supposed to be the Tuesday after we, after March thirteenth. We were able to, to, to drill down on the fact that, you know, the kids wanted faster lines. Portion sizes, not a huge response, but enough of a response at the secondary level to say, do we need to look at the portion sizes for the kids at the high school level? But you take some of the viewpoints of, you know, parents, some of them saying my kids are athletes maybe for food. Or, you know, things like that, even the kids were commenting on portion size. Then least favorite, favorite items, adding or removing items. We made some menu changes, but the kids also proposed new menu ideas, some more authentic ethnic foods, if you will, to be incorporated. So we were looking at trying and going down the road of some of those things and then moving towards a more concrete marketing plan. At this point, where I'm gonna turn over to Gary, because a lot of what happened during COVID, Gary worked tirelessly at making sure our kids were fed in a number of different ways. And then even into the next year, he was able to expand on how he was making those districts, food distributions happen and how the sales were going.
So I'm gonna, you know, I'll briefly go over this slide. We talked about this in August. But, um, you know, with the hybrid plan last year for us that are we were all nervous because there'd be only us and half the kids in school every day. Next, no kids and students in on Wednesdays. So we were like, worried going here, how are we gonna, are we gonna do this? So, you know, let me brush with our meal distribution centers. We actually did well with the breakfast counts, our lunch counts obviously decreased, but we started. You know, I mean, all know, we did start doing the meal kits over the breaks that went over well. We did kind of weekend meals. So by the end of the year, we actually had served more breakfasts than we had food this year. I wanted the way now, but, uh, but, um, you know, we did all we could do to get families meals and to help our lot of life, you know? We thought that was gonna be, that was a real difficult year and then this year came around. Uh, and this year, uh, is actually a difficult, a difficult year. The, uh, I've worked in food service for many years, 30 years, and I've never seen a year like this year. You know, we all know staffing issues. That's how we were, not just us, that's not just food service. There's staffing issues that we're dealing with. Some of that we did to ourselves, because we kept our staffing levels low to last year, knowing we had lower counts, but then you had more positions. Well, we are chipping away at that, working with Danny's office where we hired five or six new employees and a couple subs. So we are getting there, uh, we're getting there. I'm actually happy with our level right now. We can use a few more people, but pretty good. But really the thing is different than any other year and I've heard you say stuff on TV is our supply chain. We're dealing with all kinds of supply chain issues, whether it be from our vendor, like their truck pulled in, possibly have five hundred pieces, they have fifty cases. I was in a meeting a couple of weeks ago, I don't know, they're talking about, you know, you've all heard about the ships that the part in LA, you know? But, you know, that the person holding the meeting was talking about because of that, you know, shipping costs, it used to cost twenty, thirty thousand dollars a week, now it costs eighty to a hundred thousand dollars a week. There's companies that are just not making stuff because it's not profitable for them for the shipping. They'd rather concentrate out a few lines or the stuff that's where they can get things for or things that are more profitable for them. Because with the increased shipping cost, it's just making it profitable for them to, for items that now trickles down to us. Or if he insured it, does on anything and everything, chicken, pizza, you know, because, I know yesterday we can get tomato soup for until January. I don't know if it's because of the male soup, or I have heard that there was gonna be a steel shortage and things that come in over ten cans are gonna be hard to get, you know? So we don't know why they're short. So it's, that's been a challenge for us. You know, between the staffing and then really the supply demand, we are, you know, we are working on that. You know, we're doing other things too, or doing a lot of this year, working through, um, you know, come January first is the top of home ban, so we can't use anything. Working through, um, you know, uh, come January first as a styrofoam band, so we can't use, uh, anything, it's styrofoam, there's a one-time use. Can't use anymore, they all like thinking of our, we, when we did dinner during COVID, the little clam shells, we couldn't use those now. That's a one-time use styrofoam container. And the problem with it is everything replaces it three to four times more expensive. So, we have a lot of items that we're gonna have to replace, um, with more expensive ones. The, with all the supply chain issues, also a lot of price increases, even though some are, we are on bid for everything. Companies have come back and said they need to increase price and the option was either let them increase price or they expect us fighting more if they can't. At the cost that we've been on, so we're dealing with those kind of things. And. You know, I put on there, I see a couple kinds of equipment repairs, we have a lot of old equipment, some of it we kind of ignored during COVID, it wasn't as important to have it. But we're dealing a lot of equipment that needs to be replaced. Even if some of it we fix, we can fix it, but it doesn't, you know, it's not consistent, it doesn't fit the same way all the time, so we're dealing with a lot of equipment. But that's, that's some of the issues we're dealing with this year that, uh. Like I said, I think, uh, I said about last year with the difficulty here and how they're realizing that this year's the actual difficulty. They actually enjoyed their Wednesday's live here, getting stuff done, because there are no students in the building. But there are, there are positives. Our office has been able to do free reduced applications, we have it in multi, multiple languages now, I don't know exactly, but I know it's having twelve or thirteen different languages. But you can get a free reduced application now. Speaking of equipment, we are, you know, we have a kind of a thought process of maybe how we replace some of our equipment, uh. One is we were awarded a New York State grant, um, we applied for it. It gets us two pieces of government, one in, uh, Burnaby Elementary, a county oven, and one in, uh, Monell Elementary, another county oven. They cost about eighteen thousand a piece, so we got a grant for about thirty-five, thirty-six thousand dollars. I'm sadly concerned that they're gonna be more expensive than that now. Because we got that book in April when we put in for the, for the award. They don't increase for them, I'm thinking it might be more expensive than that because of everything else. Uh, and then, you know, I know we are looking into hoping that maybe through the federal funds that Rick has, that maybe that, there's a way that we maybe can buy a couple pieces of stuff. We don't know that yet, but it's an evidence to look at. We're hoping, with maybe by the end, end of this school year, if our numbers look decent, maybe we can purchase some equipment just through our department. Uh, at the end of the school year, if we can look at the P and L and say, okay, we're not doing too bad, could purchase. Doing well, maybe a couple of big things, if not, maybe some of the smaller things that we need, uh, a hot box or a small cooler, that kind of stuff. And then we're, you know, the next capital project would be a way, we're always part of it, we usually. Kind of limited toward the end of it, uh, but hopefully maybe we can figure a way to get a couple pieces of equipment to that. If we, if we could make that work, we can really make a dent into our equipment issues. Also, some positives, um. Like I said earlier, we're hiring staff, we feel a lot of our positions, so we're, we're working our way, our way through it. We've been doing ways to hire because in the past, most of our, most of our staff became subs and then became permanent, but we don't really have the opportunity to do that now. So we've hired some people straight from the street into our regular contract positions. I think we got some, uh, some, uh, very good new employees, I'm hoping, it's too early to tell, but they all seem very, uh, knowledgeable and, uh. I'm excited about that, uh. To help with our, we've got a primary vendor, who's went through the Bosie program and, uh. Then usually like the last couple of years, been farmers. And then we have a secondary vendor, Cisco, they have a state contract. When we do that, usually ninety-seven stuff we buy is from farmers, then we just use Cisco for the little things that they have, the farmers that we have. We really use those two vendors this year to help offset not getting able to get stuff in, so. You basically have weekly orders now coming in, so we'll know if farmers have, or we're trying to, Cisco, doesn't always work out, but using that system, we've. Lessened our shortages, um. And we also try to, if we can, we have the storage, we try to purchase a large quantity that we know they're having a hard time getting when they have it. Storing our freezer cooler, uh, and. And then one of the things we're doing is, you know, on a menu, we're trying to be a little more generic, we don't wanna put stuff crust pizza on there and tell them they can't, we don't have it. Because it's a popular item, so we just put pizza. And then we put stuff crust out if we have it, but then it kinda helps, you know, try to make it an open on the, on the, on that day, so they know we're stuffing crust pizza, but we don't want them to. Make a decision that day and then come in and they don't have it, decided they want, uh. Uh, and this is all happening, calling a small, not a small thing, yeah, the good thing is, as you remember, over the summer, we talked about. SSO and SFP and NSC, all the different things. We're getting a higher rate for this whole school year as well, uh, it's SFSP rate, uh. Even though we're SSO for this year.
How are you not just being the?
Uh, well. This is a summer program. Typically the rates go up at the end of the year, but for the end of the year, it's actually already, we basically go up in January. Because they're somewhere, they think they look at as a summer program and at the end of the year. Going to place for the next summer, but because of COVID, they kind of changed it, so. Normally we're gonna increase until the next year, but as a SP, this will go up, this will, or we'll say the same, but it always goes up. So all this is happening because we have an increased sales, I thought I'd give you a small break on increased sales. We've got, the first thing we do is compare summers. Well, nineteen is just a normal summer, you feed some most, usually have a some kind of program with Bosie's, you feed them. But you can see from the summer nineteen to the first COVID summer. We went from, you know, thirteen hundred practices to over seven thousand, you know, uh, a lot of increase. And then for this summer, we went to increase even more from seven thousandish to ten and twelve thousand. Now, usually this would be, because we have the meal program, those should be pretty close numbers. Reason the breakfast is higher is because. We did, we did the obvious good name of the program, but the, uh, first and second kindergarten, first grade program, we do it at the elementaries. In the summer, the leaving the first, jump in the second, where we usually provide them with a snack and if you're gonna sell it, I tally it up, I send a bill to. Right, but what I was able to do this summer is I was able to, with the state, open those buildings for breakfast instead of feeding them a snack, we fed them a breakfast. Now I claimed as a reversible meal. Now I have to charge the district and actually it's better for us as well, uh, so that's why the breakfast is that higher than the lunch for the summer. But you can see, you know, with COVID, that situation, we know the summer really helped our, our, really in us. And the next slide of our breakfasts. You can see, we just did nineteen and twenty-one, that's the last true year, that's this year, twenty-twenty of COVID hybrid years, we didn't put those numbers in. You see breakfast is, uh, increased potentially, we didn't, uh, you know, you'd see. It now gives up a hundred and ninety percent from twenty nineteen, uh, month only, I'm eating knives up, but the numbers, everybody had a healthy breakfast program anyway. And you can see the numbers they're doing, they're just, again, if you're doing almost two hundred breakfasts a day. Uh, we didn't know, so this, this is the first thirty days of school, we picked up the thirty-day, uh, calendar. We didn't know, but this information that costs goes, uh. Well, up is much lower than anybody else. Not sure why, we're gonna look into that, something we got from this is. We're gonna see what reasonings, is it a traffic flow, is it a bus situation, what is, you know, what's the reason? We don't really know. We'll work with Jim over there, maybe try to figure it out, uh, but overall, our breakfast from twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-one is about seventy-six percent. So for lunch, same thing, not quite the, the gain as breakfast, but our lunches are up. Overall, total, uh, twenty-seven percent roughly, and for the two meals together are about thirty-nine percent. Now, the elementary breakfast lunch, ours lately helped with the pre-k that we didn't have in twenty nineteen, but it also helps, but, uh, any questions so far?
I would note also that typically the sales go up from here. If you, once the kids get settled, um, the sales only increase in the next couple of months. We just had this data that we could compare all the way back to two thousand nineteen, um, and, you know, just going with the first thirty days. Sales are already increasing from these number.
Yeah, because Bernie, now, you know, we've never been a big breakfast program, uh. Their numbers are getting bigger, their, their numbers were, um, were good, but their numbers are getting like good numbers, I never thought I'd see a Bernie. So with that, you know, with all this information, it kind of. I think, got to hit on it, we kind of made us rethink our, what our plan is for this year. And, you know, marketing really became that one of them. Because really, what we're really trying to do is keep it simple, you know, we have our meals are free. Or so we need to work on getting staff, figuring out ways to make our line shorter, which kind of goes hand in hand with staffing. You know, try to serve what we advertise. And we're, you know, as a, we're both through with our vendors, we're trying to, you know, provide what we say we have on our menu. And then we, we do wanna do some stuff for this year, but we're looking at spring. Uh, I thought if we're trying to do it in a way that doesn't overburden my staff in the kitchen. And even in the buildings, because we know they have their, they have a full plate, sometimes when we wanna do something. We need to get by from the building, they need to help us with that, you know, if we wanna do a second chance breakfast. You know, we can't just start doing that, we gotta talk to principals, we gotta talk to, you know, the, the Thodians. We don't wanna do that this year, we don't wanna give them any more underplay than they already have, so trying to do things that we thought we might be able to do in the spring that, that mainly is, uh. Not a lot of work, but not a lot of, we can do from my office or with a little bit of help, uh, and some of those were, looking at the desire of our menu. When, before we got hit with COVID, we had talked open monitors in the high school, we put our menu up there. Uh, I believe the, the monitors are actually in the district, they've been here for a long time, uh, and maybe that's something we could do in the spring. We, you know, ideas were found, maybe get a QR code that kids can, that they want them to enter the menu for that day or for the week or for, whatever we want to do it. And I mean, additional information more available to families, you know, by the way, that, that's easily, easy to get to, uh. That's kind of our short-term goal for this year, and then we have. We're trying our midterm, midterm strategies, mid-range strategies is, yeah, like the menu maybe revamp it back to the equipment upgrades, because that's not a. Short-term, one-year thing, it's a, over the, over the long haul. And meanwhile, we're issuing the survey again in twenty twenty-two, that'll be three years, uh, pace could have changed. You know, hopefully with fathering, we can go with it and just expect the normal, uh. I think, I mean, you know, to use that data from three years ago probably would work, but it's probably, probably better to start from scratch. Start with a new survey in twenty twenty-two, plus we can also learn from the things we did there, maybe questions we didn't like or get the information we really needed, uh. And then, you know, start coming with a marketing idea, we threw a couple on here, uh, we may use these, we may find, think of other ones, but the recipe creation, poster contest. Uh, we wanna explore, we bought the, I know there's other districts that have a, you can plug online, maybe use, I mean, if you do this application online. It's gonna be a cost that, we don't, I don't know what that cost is and, uh, but it's something to at least look at. And then there's also ways to get, you have a whole menu and additional information online, but it's also usually through a company, there's definitely be a cost that I have, I know. Something has one they use, I don't know, you know, what, what's out there exactly, but something to look at, trying to get cost points and see what it. Having that, that people fingertips will, will help, you know. We have some of our strategies for long-term goals. Some are tied to a capital project, you know, so it all depends on the capital project, and I know it's a little hard for us because we're not necessarily able, but, uh. Uh, you know, we like to, you know, the big one probably would be, you know. Do some kind of remodel of the high school serving, high school west, uh, area, maybe have more of a. Food court feel, more like, like a little more like Costco's, uh, area as it is now, now it's just two serving lines, uh, one door, well, the other door. Look at, you know, where are these kitchens, uh, on the smaller side, maybe doing some expansion there. And then back to equipment upgrades, if we can get some equipment through the capital project that we can create. Then stuff that, you know, that we wanna explore, this is something we put out there, we don't know if we do this, but do we wanna explore the idea of replacing our vending machines or. Where the new machine, they can pin pad their ID number, they want to, they know the standard, they have money, uh. Uh, also the speed up lines, you know, I know there's technology out there about the biometrics in using a thumbprint. I don't know that, you know, we put it on there, because, you know, nothing's out the table when you're looking long-term, uh. But, uh, and then the number one thing from you guys are, you know, um, anytime you can advocate for free meals for all. That, that's, uh, that's, uh, would be. We would be asking part from you guys, just advocate for free meals for all, that would answer a lot of these questions for us, but, uh.
Meal for free for all kids. Why are we having people fill out applications for free reduced meals?
For three reasons, that help, if you don't have a free reduced application, fill out and prove you can get, uh, like AP exams cheaper. You can't, and then other, other things that tie to that, you can get either for free or reduced price. Also, assuming that we go back to normal next year, um. I don't know what they would, usually when you call it a free reduced application, you, you do thirty-day grace period the following year. If you don't fill one out this year and they go back, I don't know if they were just blindly saying everybody is a thirty-day grace period next year or. From day one, if you didn't fill it out this year, you're full pay. But if you did fill one out last year, you still get that thirty-day grace period. And then, um, the, I won't get the, I won't get the, but I eat, the EDP cards or whatever, that's tied to free and reduced. We're not the main, we're part of the equation, we're not the sole purpose. But if you don't have a free reduced application on file, through the state, then you're free, that will lower your chances of getting that card. So, plus it ties into some numbers for the district, you know, Rick can probably tell you more about that than I could, I know. If we didn't, uh, if we don't have it, it would, it would, uh, be harder to do certain things.
I'm curious about the, um, the Philly Styrofoam Band that's coming up. And with the policy set of replacement items being three to four times more, will that ever drive the district back toward, um, purchasing reusable items? And if so, does that tie into kind of some of our equipment upgrades? I don't know if we still have dishwashers and sanitizers and things that could be used to clean.
I order right now. Permanent trays that we usually use, but, uh, again, ordered. Feel done. I don't know where they are. Just hope you're on October thirteenth and we want, you know, I wanna start using them, but we may have to slowly put them in because, you know, like if you're at, uh, school. Yeah, like if you're burning, if you're doing in the classroom, that's a lot harder to deal with.
Yep.
But, you know, when we get back to normal and they're all coming down, if you, if you, even if Bernie, they have some classes, I know. Uh, I think they're pre-gain, they're kidding, gonna be eating and have carry now, so we're sending them on the real trays. Even now, because we have dishwasher, we do have a limited amount of trays, uh, but yes, that's the plan is, uh. I would like this year, or probably by next year, that we're back to our completely one blue trays, the blue tray that you can use. Multiple times and, uh, and, you know, dishwasher, we all, we have dishwashers in every, uh, kitchen, which is, uh. There's a plus, is I didn't notice, the plus, the district did not have this machine.
Are we still using some styrofoam trays?
Yeah, we're still using them.
So by January first, will we have some stuff using those?
Well, I don't know the wording exactly, I'm probably using up my inventory and once it's gone, start using that, using them, uh. So I, so I plan to use them right until December ninth, twenty-third or whatever. But, but, uh, that was hard to do, we, and we have it, because we were, we were lucky to get some from somebody else, but actually, they stopped making them. Do they do, ahead of time, because they knew we weren't gonna use them. So like our paper company hasn't had them for three months, but I would, I would be getting some from Cisco. Or an increased price that we normally pay for a lot less.
Is the menu accessible just on infinite campus?
Menu is accessible on, um, on the website.
Could it be out? Seems like that would be, would be, like in the student bathroom?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, or on the parent portal, I mean, we have access to other. Documents through infinite campuses and parents, so I would imagine that that would be, I mean, for parents who are, just frequently place things online with parents, saying, you know, with the lunch. It's for, for Bernie this week or whatever, I mean, is it possible to add a? Document on there? I mean, we can see the kid's schedule and we can sign report cards, I would assume that a lunch menu would be able to be added, I don't know where, but.
They're setting them at the elementary level with the kids in the backpacks, but really the secondary level where you don't have that automatic distribution.
Right.
Which is why we're thinking of going to explore the mobile apps, because that's what the kids use, um, so. We can, it's definitely explore whether we can put it in internet campus as well in the interim before we can get that stuff.
I was thinking in the meantime.
You know? Thank you, Eleanor.
Thank you.
Anything else, Eric, meeting evaluation? So for those way in the back, we apologize, we're we're working on getting a sound system. Maybe by next meeting, we'll we'll be able to have you guys hear a little more of what we're talking about up here. Um, but online, I'm curious if there's anyone that logged online, if you can send an email, let us know how the, the new system works with the new camera and the sound should be the same as what we did last year, or last week. So with that, Cory.
I would like to make a motion that we enter executive session for the purpose of discussing collective negotiations with your transportation and fair professional associations.
That's the record, all in favor, by all. Thank you, thank you all for attending.